I thought for a minute that we had the golden hour. I don't know if I have a photo. I can't show it out to everybody, but if you look at that, it looks like sepia. It's not. It's sand. I called my sister in Lubbock. I said, we have your yard. When do you want it back? Be happy to get it back to you. Okay. Thank you all for coming out. I'm going to go ahead and open the Granberry City Council regular meeting. It is 6:00 PM Tuesday, March 4th, 2025. We're at Granberry City Hall, 116 West Bridge Street in Granberry, Texas. We're also live on www.granberry.org/live. And I understand that we do have quite a few people that will be observing the council meeting online tonight so that they can get ready for the president's presentation. And I guess they watch it every night for some other good reason at that. I'm going to have go ahead and get going, a call to order, and ask that Ms. Diane Raspberry, if she would, from Hope Community, if she would lead us in the invocation. We'll stand and then we'll do the pledge.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all your goodness that you provide for your children each day. Father, we thank you that you are such a good, good Father. Father, we thank you for your endless mercy that you pour out over us each day. And Father, we thank you for each council person that's here. Father, we ask that you give them the wisdom and discernment that can only come from you. And Father, we ask that you pour out a spirit of wisdom, discernment, of respect and honor and consideration for one another. Lord, we ask that you take charge of this meeting tonight, Lord. And Father, we thank you for each person that's here. We thank you, Father, that we're two or more gathered, that you're here with us also. So Father, we ask that you be with us as we go through the rest of this night, Lord. Keep us safe and free from harm, Lord. And so we lay these prayers at your feet tonight, and we say thank you for answered prayer. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Now, if you'll join us and pledge allegiance to the United States flag, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And to the Texas flag, honor the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible. All right. Okay. Again, thank you all for coming tonight. We have a special proclamation to proclaim March 25th as the 23rd Annual March for Meals Month. And not only is the proclamation special, we're going to make it even more special. Mr. Skip Overdyer, who volunteers at Meals for Wheels and also drives for Meals and Wheels, has asked if he would, if it'd be okay if he read the proclamation. And my initial response was, how much do you want? Because I think it's somebody decided that this is going to be the longest proclamation that we have. We'll see how well you do. But Skip has asked to do that, and I am delighted that we have that type of individual on this council that could step up and give a proclamation to an area that are with a group that he obviously thinks a lot of. So Skip, it's all yours.
Okay, so I'm very happy to be able to do this. This is, and as you can see, this is for the older Americans, and so they gave me the older Americans' version of the proclamation because the proclamation is in real small print. So this gives me an opportunity to be able to read the whole thing. Trish, you folks want to step up here and the rest of your entourage?
The one thing that the mayor did not mention is that Skip is also on our Board of Directors, and we have another board member up here, Jeremy Sorrell. And I have to introduce Bob Pennell, who you know as a faithful council watcher and attender, and he has been volunteering for Meals on Wheels for more than 20 years. He's been driving for our folks.
Okay, so whereas in 1972, the Older Americans Act was amended to establish a national nutrition program for adults aged 60 and older, ensuring access to essential meals and support, and whereas in 2002, Meals on Wheels America launched the March for Meals campaign to highlight the importance of both congregate and home-delivered meal programs and to raise awareness about the growing issue of hunger among older Americans. And whereas, the 2025 March for Meals marks 23 years of mobilizing support for Meals on Wheels programs, which provide critical services through donations, volunteerism, and advocacy while addressing social isolation and food insecurity. And whereas, for 48 years, the Hood County Committee on Aging's Meals on Wheels and Congregate Meals programs have admirably served our community, ensuring that older adults receive the nutrition and companionship they need. And whereas, the dedicated volunteers of Meals on Wheels Hood County are the heart of the program, delivering not only nutritious meals, but also kindness, compassion, and vital well-being checks to isolated and homebound seniors. And whereas, Meals on Wheels programs deserve recognition for their invaluable contributions to the well-being and independence of older adults in our community and across the nation. Now, therefore, Jim Jarrett, Mayor of the City of Granberry, proclaims March 2025 as the 23rd Annual March for Meals Month, and encourages all residents to honor Meals on Wheels programs, recognize the seniors they serve, and celebrate the volunteers who dedicate their time and compassion to this cause. March for Meals enriches our community and plays a crucial role in combating food insecurity and social isolation in Granberry and beyond, given under his hand and the seal of the City of Granberry on this fourth day of March 2025, Jim Jarrett, Mayor.
Are we doing a photo op? We are doing a photo op. Trish, you folks want to step up here and the rest of your entourage? The one thing that the mayor did not mention is that Skip is also on our Board of Directors, and we have another board member up here, Jeremy Sorrell. And I have to introduce Bob Pennell, who you know as a faithful council watcher and attender, and he has been volunteering for Meals on Wheels for more than 20 years. He's been driving for our folks.
Okay, so whereas in 1972, the Older Americans Act was amended to establish a national nutrition program for adults aged 60 and older, ensuring access to essential meals and support, and whereas in 2002, Meals on Wheels America launched the March for Meals campaign to highlight the importance of both congregate and home-delivered meal programs and to raise awareness about the growing issue of hunger among older Americans. And whereas, the 2025 March for Meals marks 23 years of mobilizing support for Meals on Wheels programs, which provide critical services through donations, volunteerism, and advocacy while addressing social isolation and food insecurity. And whereas, for 48 years, the Hood County Committee on Aging's Meals on Wheels and Congregate Meals programs have admirably served our community, ensuring that older adults receive the nutrition and companionship they need. And whereas, the dedicated volunteers of Meals on Wheels Hood County are the heart of the program, delivering not only nutritious meals, but also kindness, compassion, and vital well-being checks to isolated and homebound seniors. And whereas, Meals on Wheels programs deserve recognition for their invaluable contributions to the well-being and independence of older adults in our community and across the nation. Now, therefore, Jim Jarrett, Mayor of the City of Granberry, proclaims March 2025 as the 23rd Annual March for Meals Month, and encourages all residents to honor Meals on Wheels programs, recognize the seniors they serve, and celebrate the volunteers who dedicate their time and compassion to this cause. March for Meals enriches our community and plays a crucial role in combating food insecurity and social isolation in Granberry and beyond, given under his hand and the seal of the City of Granberry on this fourth day of March 2025, Jim Jarrett, Mayor. Are we doing a photo op? We are doing a photo op. Thank you.
So for those of you who don't know, my name is Trish Burwell, and I'm the Executive Director for the Hood County Senior Center. I've been there for a year as the ED. I've been volunteering there for more than 15 years. It is a passion of mine. I've worked with this population for many, many years. And we serve our folks here in Granberry and Hood County, 60 years of age and older, congregate meals, Meals on Wheels, life enrichment, and transportation. We get them where they need to go and help them remain a community member, meaningful part of our community. And we really care about these folks. It is some of the folks that we deliver to really need us, really, truly need us. We deliver almost 300 meals a day, five days a week, to folks in the community. And we dial 911 quite often, actually, and make sure some of these folks, we're the only contact that they see once a day. So it's very meaningful to me, and I know that the folks that are standing up here, obviously, very meaningful to all of us. So to our community, I really appreciate all of the effort that you put in to volunteering. The more than 250 volunteers that we have on a regular basis to deliver to these folks is exceptional, and I appreciate you all. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And I know that many of you, many of you recognize Trish as one of our former council members, one of our very good former council members. We miss you still. I keep trying to recruit her back. Hadn't worked. Her husband does drop by every now and then and threaten me, though. I'll stop. Okay. So now we're going to move to proclamation and presentations. Mr. Kaufman, do you have any public comments, issues, critter gene statements to recognize our staff? And let me recognize Trish. Trish is the one that put that on the agenda the first time about three and a half years ago. We've done it every, every meeting since. Thank you.
I'd like to take the opportunity to recognize the achievement that our Economic Development Director and team have, have recently accomplished. We received the 2024 Economic Excellence Recognition Award at the 2025 Winter Conference. The, this recognition program provides recognition to economic development organizations that meet the desired threshold of professionalism. Recipients qualify for recognition based on training taken by their governing board, council, as well as their economic development director and professional staff. Certifications, professional memberships, and activities, and organizational effectiveness in the economic development staff also contribute to the standard for the qualification. Also included in that are our policies and our governance of how we operate our economic development. And so Shay could not be here with us tonight because I encouraged her to go to her daughter's one-act play tonight, or whatever they call it these days. And so in her absence, I just wanted to put that on record, and let's give her a round of applause. Maybe she'll see this on video. Also, I've got a few other announcements. As, as y'all know, we've had a rough go of the weather, and I just wanted to give a big shout out to our electric crew, our electric department crew. Some of you may have electricity provided by other providers besides municipal, our Granberry Municipal Electric, but we do have about 4,000 meters out there that we serve with transmission and distribution lines. And our guys have been out in the, in the bad conditions ever since the storm blew in and been working on the power lines that have failed. We did have a pole that fell over on, over near Doyle Street, and it caused the power to go out at the hospital. So the hospital's standby generator went up. Our crews were out there and have resolved that issue and got them back together. Our airport registered wind at 61 miles an hour today, and that makes the job even more challenging when you're up in a bucket truck dancing around high voltage wires. So can't thank them enough for all their hard work. And then I would like to announce that a recent promotion for Maggie Wiley from Recreation Coordinator to the Parks and Recreation Superintendent. And also today, Paul Gast was approved to be the wastewater, from being the wastewater superintendent to becoming the Assistant Public Works Director. So give them a round of applause. Internal promotions are encouraged in our personnel policy. And why not, when you've got the resources in-house, just keep using them and furthering their career opportunity and enhancing the services they provide to our citizens. So thank you all for being here tonight as well.
Counsel? Others? Others? Okay. I appreciate all you have. I have one just statement. Over the last two weeks, three weeks, we were working with TechDOT, and we received some information about what's being lined up for, you know, going into the budget, getting plans for. You heard us talk about it last week as we talked about some of the opportunities that we, that the staff, that Chris and his staff have found that will help us make paying for what we had to pay for a little bit easier. But I wanted to say thank you to the citizens of Granberry and Hood County, because one of the things that the TechDOT people look for is citizen input. Do the citizens really, you know, what are they saying? And we would like to have their input. We, they did. TechDOT gathered input from Oklahoma all the way to Dublin, Texas. And that was about, what, 500, almost 500 people were inputting. Granberry and Hood County input over 35% of the entire amount. We have about 10% of the road. So our input had a big, big, or makes a big, big difference. I guarantee you that the people at TechDOT know that 377 is there, and they know that the people in Granberry and Hood County care about 377. And they're, I hate to say, well, they're working on it, because I'd like to say they're working on it, and it will be finished by. But I assure you, it's being worked, and it is one of the high, high priorities of TechDOT. And I could say that even, I believe, the chief engineer, who Chris has met with, Skip has met with down in Austin, I've met with a couple of, three times, he too knows all about TechDOT. It was last week, wasn't it? Yeah, we were, it all runs together, I assure you. So thank you, citizens in Granberry and Hood County. We appreciate it. I'll move now to public comments on agenda items for non-public hearing agenda items. And we have no one who has signed up, so I'll move to the consent agenda. And all items on the consent agenda are routine or previously discussed. And tonight, all we have are the minutes to approve the city council minutes for February the 18th, 2025 regular meeting. I don't assume anybody wants to take that off the agenda. Anybody want to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda?
Some moved.
Mr. Wadley makes the motion?
Second.
Mr. Corrigan, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? No one opposed? The consent agenda is approved. We'll move to the deliberation agenda, and we will discuss and add suggestions and or edits to the Friesen Nichols Consulting Team on the 2025 Comprehensive Plan Draft that has been presented to the City Council and the Planning and Zoning Commission. So, Mr. Kaufman, you want to start us off again?
You bet. First off, this is our second meeting as a city council to interact with David with Friesen Nichols, and appreciate you coming over tonight. And we will begin what we need to do, I guess. We'll start on page 112 this time, and I've got lots of comments. I'm sure you all have lots of comments. I think the council should go first. And as we get through that, we'll plow through this together. I don't know how in-depth you all want to go. Oh, I forgot to punch the button.
Sorry. Y'all hear me now? Better like it, because you can hear me now, right? Back to where I was at. We're ready to take some comments and ask questions of the consulting engineer. I do have a few comments, and I'll save those for later. But they've been working on our draft, and they're going to send us another draft after they receive all our comments, what I understand. So the first 111 pages have been dealt with at the meeting last month, and so here we are again, starting on the environmental, environment and natural resources chapter.
And this is the main subject that we start with here is water, correct? Okay. So I had a, a question on this, and I'm going back. It's, I'm already at page 122. It's talking about Granberry overlies the outcrop where pumpage has historically exceeded recharge. That concerns me, but I don't know, should I be, you know, should I be running with my hair on fire, or what, you know, does it not get it within a percent, or is it 5%? What is, what are we looking at here?
Yeah, this is intended to be kind of a high-level overview of the environment in which we, we get our water. It's, it's not an in-depth analysis of water supply over, over time. You know, we would definitely want to drill down and do a much more in-depth analysis to try to project that out. But it, it is kind of looking at high-level trends, which really are happening all over Texas. I mean, that's why we're having state-level conversations about funding and desalinating the Gulf and finding other water sources, because water all over Texas is kind of in this predicament where we're drawing out more than we're, we're taking in typically.
That's, I'll go back to the roads, 377. We have to get ahead of this, because, I mean, this is, you know, this would not be sustainable. We have to be ahead of this. And same process approach that we've used for the roads, I want to make sure that, you know, Granberry is heard, heard loud and clear, and that we, you know, maximize our resources, our resources here that we have. I don't want to, don't want to waste anything, but at the same time, I want to be reaching out with, to you guys, and I know that you reach out to the, to the Water Board and everybody else, so that we are doing what we need to do as a city to accommodate the population growth that we talked about just two weeks ago. What's, what is coming our way? Like 20,000 people in what, 2030, 2050? Something like that. I think it's coming faster. Other? Counsel?
Mayor.
Yes?
On page 120, Chris, can you, don't we have tree protection? It states Granberry does not currently have a tree preservation ordinance.
We have a voluntary preservation ordinance.
Right, but we do have some type of ordinance.
Yes.
So maybe, maybe mentioning that, that we do have some type of tree preservation ordinance in there.
And, and we have a reward system for maintaining historic trees that goes into there with, with your landscaping requirements. And there are some incentives through that by saving trees. But as far as punishing people for cutting down a tree anymore, we don't do that.
Right. And I may skip ahead. Page 133. I'd like Chris to look at that and see if we can't add any more other awards or designations or, or, or things that we've accomplished since 2020.
Yes, sir. We've got more.
I know that that timeline's going to have to move over quite a bit, so that needs to be revised as well.
Yeah, I had that, I had that one.
And I don't want to take all the time, Mayor. I think council members.
I'll, I'll shoot my ideas towards Chris, and then Chris can have those inputs made on our behalf.
Okay. I had a question on the next page. Chris, we talked about baseline year for being considered historic is defined as construction of 50 or more years. Is that, is it?
Ask him, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that's a national standard and a state standard for historic recognition. Doesn't mean that every building over 50 years old is deemed historic, but it's eligible if it's over 50 years old. So for us, 2025, that would be buildings built on or before 1975. But they would still have to meet the thresholds for the, you know, the Department of Interior standards for significance, architectural integrity, and so forth.
Okay. That was my comment. It seemed like a really broad definition, but.
It's just recognizing that the city has adopted those, those same standards.
Okay.
I would like to make a point out on, on that same page, 124. You got, on the, I don't know if you got this off the BRA website or where, but I was told that specifically this is not a flood control lake. And it probably contributes to that, but BRA told me we are not a flood control lake. Now, I look at your source at the bottom, and it says that's where you got their information. So I'm not arguing with you. I'm just going to say I've got a note there that says I don't think that's accurate. So based on the conversations I've had with the BRA.
We can go back and look at that. What, what page was that on?
124.
124, okay.
That's, that's a big difference.
We'll, we'll verify that.
Yeah. We're a water supply for a nuclear plant. That's what we are. And they're going to make sure it's full for that. On, on page 128, on the recommended strategies, EN 11, I've got a question. I've just asked for you to kind of clarify that. It says promote higher-quality surface water treatment facilities through the use of infiltration and bioretention where appropriate. Can you translate that into layman's terms for me?
Yeah, it's, it's essentially whenever you do a project like a parking lot, or it can be a street project, that there's a landscaped area, and it's just something that's designed to capture the stormwater and filter it so that it's cleaner once it gets back into the lake. So you can do that numerous different ways.
Do you have anything else in that chapter y'all want to cover? Historic preservation and downtown revitalization is the next chapter. And Eddie's already mentioned on page 133, we'd like to see some more awards that we received there. You know, the scenic city is one award that we keep renewing. We've been a scenic city for, I think, 14 years, and maybe, maybe 15. And, and so we probably need to camp on that. But we also are the Celebration Capital of Texas as of last legislative session. And I know you picked up on that somewhere else, but there's some more accolades that we can look at.
Cultural Arts District.
Cultural Arts District, Music Friendly City designation. You know, we, our water, I know we've got some water concerns in the room tonight, but our water was competed for flavor in, among five states in this region, and we came in first place. And so we're, we strive for excellence on that as well. I think we need to put that in there. We'll, I'll get you those.
We'll, we'll make some space on the bottom of the timeline so that you got it on both sides.
We've got 155 years to work with here, so we're good.
We might need to go to two pages.
I'm looking at the fuzzy map again, and I know y'all are fixing that. The, on page 137, number 16, number 11, and number 12 do not exist anymore. Those are moved-in structures that were at that park that have since been demolished. So I don't know, you probably got this from the Historic Preservation Committee. I don't know. And I think the numbering is a little off on those as well. Number 15, the light plant, we've still got that. And it's really across from the post office, down on the, by the railroad track where number 12 was listed. And the number 12 used to be where the 15 is listed. So maybe that's our map we need to straighten out. So maybe that's our map we need to straighten out.
Okay.
There's a lot to take in with this, you know, a lot. You know, I mentioned this at our last part of the book. It seems like sometimes y'all are criticizing the city in our own document. And I'd like to see that changed on page, well, throughout the document, page one forty, top right-hand paragraph. It seems, it just, I made a note, why criticize? Maybe there's a way to rephrase that to be more positive and friendly.
The underutilized or vacant?
It says we're beyond the question, that, that paragraph. And then the next page, one forty-one, you identified these areas and they're all parking lots as underutilized properties. So I would like to know what you do to replace the parking lots if you're going to repurpose those parking lots. They're very important. In fact, we don't have enough parking and your study shows that. So I'm trying to figure out how to, they're calling them vacant lots. They're paved parking lots in the downtown. And we need more, definitely. And we've talked in the past, possibly a parking garage, and I think that's part of this plan, on, on part of that. Maybe that's an underutilization of a parking lot if we can build a, they're, they're really not big enough to build a, a structure that goes up, square footage-wise. It makes it tough. And interesting.
I agree the underutilized terminology, we can, we can find a, a more constructive sounding term.
Yeah, I don't, yeah.
Opportunity properties or, you know, future enhancement areas.
I just don't know what you do with them. We've got to have the parking, so how do you repurpose it?
It would need to be done in conjunction with some sort of parking structure to replace that, that parking. If, if that could free up the need for those parking lots to serve that role at that point, those sites could maybe come into play as additional development areas.
And they're in our historic district and so that's a real point of contention for our citizens that we would build a parking structure that doesn't meet our historic nature. So it's really a, a tough problem to address. And so we're looking for some additional guidance there maybe, so.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Mayor, thank you. I, I think it's just the word underutilized is what, what is the sticking point because you go on a, on a holiday weekend and, and those spots are not underutilized. And, and if you do, go here during the weekdays, those spots are, are utilized by everybody to park at because there's no parking around the square. So I think it's, to me, it's just the terminology underutilized is what's throwing me off because they are used. They're used more excessively and they're, we keep on getting people that wants us to build more parking around the, the square so that they don't have to park, you know, at least what they consider a mile. That's all we have. I had to park a mile from the historic Granberry in order to get there.
Right.
So I know they, they overexaggerate, but I, I think they're the most utilized parking areas that we have.
Yeah, I mean, a, a couple of thoughts. This, this map is kind of an update of a map that exists in the plan today. So from one standpoint, you could look at it and say, eight, nine years, you know, these properties have kind of just done what they've done and they're still parking and they're still used. You know, does, does this map serve a useful purpose? Or is, is it better to just say if down the road, the city partners to do a, a parking garage or structured parking somewhere, maybe that can put these properties into play. But it's, it's more of a policy level discussion than actually going in and mapping out specific properties.
As you, as you go through. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just saying that's a carryover from the current plan. So if it hasn't really moved in nine years, maybe, maybe it's better to take a different approach.
We, I, I think that, you know, as we, as we go through this and the detail that we're going through, literally this will be, be the developed plan for fifteen years, five years, you know, three years coming back. And I think that parking is not as important as water, but it is going to be one of the driving things that happen to this council over the next two or three, two or three years. It, it's, you know, Mr. Rodriguez defines it different from a parking garage. He said it's parking and, you know, wherever it is, whatever it may look like. But we are going to have to resolve that. And anything that you see while you're working through this, that'll help us come to a, a good conclusion on that is going to be very helpful. Appreciate it.
You're absolutely right. And Councilman Rodriguez, you're absolutely right as well. If these parking lots are being used on a daily, regular basis, then that indicates the demand. There's, there's a lot of downtowns and cities that are a lot bigger where there's empty parking lots everywhere the majority of the time. Maybe on Sunday they're full, but for the majority of the time, they, they sit empty. The fact that y'all are utilized, that means that there's demand that we hope will only increase as downtown becomes more successful. So I, I think it does deserve a more in-depth look and a more strategic approach than saying, here's parking lots, you know, we should do something with those someday. Well, we're already doing something with them.
I think this, this map.
That is an opportunity to do a more in-depth study of that.
This map would, if you could rename it and use it on page like one forty-four and one forty-five to indicate parking and parking culture into that area. So if you, if you just take this map and move it to one forty-four and then, and then kind of label it downtown parking and use it in this, in this context to identify the parking, downtown parking areas, that would, that would help. Or maybe that's a thought of, of reutilizing that map in a different location.
Yeah, that's a good suggestion.
Improving user information, which is one of the, uh, ads sent here. Thank you.
What is the parking maximums on one forty-five? Says establish parking mac, maximums and?
We have that.
I didn't. What is that?
We have that in the planning department. That was done probably before Kira got here. But we have, we've done a parking study and we probably should share that with you if you haven't received that yet. But that was based on the 2016 plan and things we were looking at. We actually counted how many spaces when we were redoing the square. This plan was adopted in 2016. And that's what I'm kind of, my next statement was going to be is, a lot of this stuff, I think, is carried over from the previous plan. Because we've done a downtown revitalization plan and it's telling us, we need to foster more walkable environment, consider increasing street level activity within the downtown. I don't know what more we can do besides what we've just done in 2017 to make it more walkable. And, you know, it's all ADA compliant now. You don't have the limestone rocks that are uneven. They're making people fall down or when they get wet, they're slippery. So I'm not sure what we're talking about. We've got, within the, the square itself, you've got sidewalks coming to the square from every direction. So I'm not, listen, I appreciate you coming and not sitting there. I understand what you're going through. You're hearing a bunch of this from us coming at you all nonstop. And, and I don't know the right way to do this any other way than just everybody get together and talk to you about it. But the negativity in here has got to stop. I'm looking at page one forty-two. Granberry must find a way to build on its market strength while providing unique options to the residents and visitors. Okay, that implies that we're not doing anything for them. I've got a tourism department back there that's number one in the state that's doing all kinds of activities. It's not recognized anywhere in this document. And it, there's, I'm just, it's hard not to get ahead of myself. I'm sorry. To foster a more walkable environment, consider increasing street level activity within the downtown. Housing, that's on page one forty-three as well, the city will need to address. We've done that on, on, under twenty-four seven downtown. Amenities, that's a, that's a free market doing this with existing codes. They're doing those things. I'm afraid that a lot of this is just being carried forward from the last plan. We've got B and B rentals are on the plate, are in place on the square. I think we've got twenty or twenty-four more B and Bs on the square units than we did in 2016. And, and I'm not sure that y'all had that information, but maybe this was the information back then that just got carried forward. I don't know. Zoning C B D around the separate downtown core, example, Kerrville, Texas. The next one says placing historic overlay atop downtown mixed-use zoning. We, that's what our C B D is. It's a mixed use. You can do anything in it. Creating a zoning for historic district C B D. We've done it. Those are three bullets on the left column under zoning. That's encouraged us to do. Those have been in place for decades. Again, I feel sorry for you having to listen to us, especially me, because I got wound up reviewing this last night. Again, I'm like, there's some areas I just struck it out, needs to go away. Start putting values to this document that doesn't reflect what this council wants. I have to protect them from that. We'll get there when we get there. We're in this chapter for now.
You know what you, what I think you can feel good about is this will be a working document. It will not go on a shelf.
Right.
We will be using this document. Thank you.
And I, I don't, I don't disagree, Mr. Kaufman. This is largely carryover information from the, the last plan. Short of doing a, a full-blown downtown plan where we kind of start from the beginning and, and assess conditions as, as they are today, we are updating to try to get current with this. So there, there may be some things that we, we were unaware of when, when updating this chapter. I do believe and agree that it, it would be a benefit to, to do a focused downtown plan as a follow-up to this comprehensive plan. In the meantime, we can, we can certainly update based on any comments or any changes that need to be made in, in this document. Because you have accomplished a lot and your downtown is, you know, the envy of the state. I've lived close to Midlothian and I was visiting their council the other day. They came here for a council retreat and they were gushing about Granberry.
I gave them a tour.
Yeah, so we certainly want to be as positive as we can be about everything that's going on.
You got anything else in that chapter, gentlemen?
This is kind of a general comment and this just actually came up. I was talking to the city manager right before the meeting tonight. I'm reading the paragraph about spillover parking.
What page are you on, sir?
One forty-five. It says the city should consider establishing residential park, residential permit parking zones to prioritize curb spaces for residents or businesses. And, and when I read a paragraph like that, I'm like, that sounds like something we could consider. You know, for certain areas where, where parking's an issue like that. But then in talking to the city manager just a little while ago, he was saying he's going to take this document as what we want and, and try to incorporate all of it eventually, right? I mean, that's what.
That's our walking orders. This is the plan.
And so this is like, I have no problem with the paragraph, but we haven't even discussed that yet, whether we would actually want to have, you know, permitted parking for, in neighborhoods and stuff like that. And, you know, what, what if you have a, I mean, if, if you, all of a sudden, he's saying, he takes that paragraph and says, we're putting signs up. And then you can't park in these places. I can see a huge negative impact from that. You know, when you have things going on in the square, people are parking all over the place and all of a sudden you're going to have, you know, big, big strips of street that are unoccupied when you really need it for the event. So I'm not saying take that paragraph out. I just use that as an example. But the way I look at this is slightly different now than when I was reviewing it the last three weeks. Because I'm going, you know, a lot of this is, is, it's good information and, and I kind of hear some of the negativeness that Chris is talking about. But now I'm, I'm going to go, well, wait a minute, we, we might not want this. Or, or we need to discuss it. And, and you say should consider, which means we could discuss it. I just, it's kind of a different way of looking at it when you think this, this whole book is marching orders for the city manager. Anyway, it, just a general comment. We'll get back to some of that.
So let me add back to the page one forty-four, middle paragraph, second, or right, left column, I'm sorry. Second paragraph, down in the middle, "The goal for, for the downtown is not an auto-dominant environment, but rather one that equally accommodates vehicles and pedestrians." Okay, so we've got text on highway on two roads coming through our square in our downtown. Surface parking should be allocated behind buildings with mid-block entrances to accentuate downtown development and create walkable environment. So are you advocating for us to, with that statement, to remove businesses and buildings that are behind the square and turn that into parking space? I just, I've got a note here for you to explain what that means. Because what we've got are businesses dense all along with shared parking spots and that whole C B D. And how, how do we, now believe me, I've been in a city, I've managed a city where that's happened. There, there was junk houses and structures behind the, the main street and they bulldozed it, made it a parking lot and people were able to walk through certain businesses that said, hey, you can use our business as a pass-through to get to the, to the main street. I can see that, but I don't know how that would apply in Granberry. So again, I'm, I'm afraid this is a copy and paste from the past or from another book or whatever. I don't feel personalized here with what we're reading. I, I guess that's the issue is, is the, it's not personalized to our city like I feel like we should have this. And, and just so you know, I'm not all negative. On the, the right column at the bottom, it says on-street parking. I agree with that whole paragraph. You know, there, there is some good stuff, but for the most part, on every, every page, it's, not every page, maybe every fourth page, I've got a lot of ink and.
Let me ask about the, the recommended strategies. What's your, you know, I'm looking at that and some of the questions that we raise are, you know, you're saying here, this is a recommended strategies. Maybe you need to go look at this further. That's how I'm picking this up, is these are some action steps that may or may not have been answered in the whole program here. As Dr. Wadley says, you know, I'm, I'm looking at it with a different set of eyes now as we realize that this is, this is our.
It's our plan.
This is our plan. We're committing to this group right here that this is what we're going to be working on. So recommended strategies, what, what would you see us doing next with, with this?
I think when you see recommended strategies, that's kind of the summary of everything, all the information that's in the chapter that, that came before it. And, and these really are the list of, of actions that the city should consider taking. Now, when you get to the, the final chapter, the implementation chapter, it adds some more detail to that so that you can kind of prioritize, okay, what order do we do this? You know, we, we probably don't want to rebuild a street in three years if we're, you know, going to put a, a water line down the middle of that street in the fourth year. So that, that kind of helps orient when these things should happen. The rest, you know, the, their kind of background information, the rest of the information in the chapter is kind of informing those strategies. But you're, you're not, you're not wrong that, you know, it's taken as a policy guide. If something is in the plan, then it should at least be something that we feel like we can pursue further. So if, if it's something that doesn't fit or is out of character with Granberry, then whether it's in the implementation strategies as a recommended action or just some information, then yeah, we should be careful, consider carefully whether we want to put that in there, even as background information or, hey, here's a thing that another city did, we could consider doing that too. Because that, that could be misconstrued.
All right. Yes, sir. So I mean, so these recommended strategies, and the way I looked at it was it, after reading that chapter, that these are the things that are recommended based on what it says in the chapter. And as, as Chris has said, if, if the data that are the statements that are in the, in the chapters are not quite reflecting what we think needs to be done, then these recommended strategies are going to have us doing things that, that we don't think should be done either. So I think it's, it's not only just a rewrite of the chapter, it's a rewrite of the strategy. And then that just boils over then into the, the initiatives at the end. Is if, if the chapter isn't correct and the strategies aren't correct, then the initiatives at the end that we, that they're requiring us or asking us to do are not going to be correct. So I agree, there, there needs to be some real refining to this, to this whole, to the whole document. Others? Move to the next group. The economic development?
Let me read a statement from Shay before we get into that chapter. She's our economic development director. The economic development. "The economic development section of the comprehensive plan should, should prioritize three key objectives: increasing capital investment, job creation, and higher wages. Any initiatives that do not align with these priorities should be reevaluated. Additionally, there are multiple references to an economic development corporation, which does not currently exist. If the inclusion of an EDC is a recommendation, then it should explicitly be stated as such. Furthermore, gaps remain in the information regarding funding sources. Please review my previous comments on the plan that she's already submitted to you-"
Yes, we have this.
"-and schedule a follow-up meeting within the next week to address these concerns." So that's what she would like to do, um, with you, and, and I, some of these comments were mine too, so.
Well, we discussed the EDC last time you were here, because that, when, if you took this from the previous one, we had an EDC that, that ended about five years ago-
We were trying to, in 2016, we didn't have one yet.
Well, we, we had the joint, the joint venture-
After, after this plan was put together the first time, we created the deal, yeah, probably about 2019.
And, and so, but we talked last time about, that, that just needs to be reworded, uh, you know, the economic development department, or whatever you want to call it.
And, and it doesn't take into account the 46,000 square foot industrial building that's under construction right now, that's a spec building in the industrial park. It doesn't take into account a lot of projects that are going on. Project Iron Giant is about 200 jobs, industrial manufacturing, Railspur, $250 million project. That's happening, but there's no mention of it, and I'm sorry that you didn't get that information from whoever you interviewed, so. There's a lot going on that, I'm afraid, after, after sitting here, I, I'm beginning to believe this is just a carryover with a little bit of tweaking from the last plan, and it doesn't fit us anymore. Yeah.
Other comments, uh, you guys on the economic development?
It's a lot of work for everybody involved, and, uh, we need to note that.
You know, I was, uh-
But, but on the other side of it, Mayor, we've got a consulting team that's number one in the state, and we need to press them to get their very best work. I, I don't feel like that we've got it yet, and we're going to get there. I believe that Freezer Nichols Planning Team is the best in the state, we're just-
Yeah, I don't see anything, uh, just not, not negative, this is, we're working through it.
Yeah.
And, uh, we each have a, a different view, and thank goodness, that's, uh, that's what it's about.
We're really more of a regional retail hub, uh, people, I, I meet people from Haco that are at our lumberyard, or, um, on, on the square buying something, or somewhere else that's just here to buy something that didn't come for the tourism event, you know? We bring a lot of people in town for that, and Stevenville comes over here. Before, they got an HEB in Parker County, they'd come over here, so, uh, we've lost some of that business with their new HEB at Hudson Oaks, but, um, there's a lot changed since this was all put together, and, uh, on the, on the economic development, y'all got us listed, number three industry is, is solid waste management. And I don't know of a company in this city that does that for a living.
What, what page is that on?
I don't know, I just remember seeing it.
He's got it.
I've seen it a couple of times in here, under the statistics.
168?
168.
168?
I don't know.
Let's get to it. That's the employment by industry. Looking at, uh-
168 is Hood County.
Yeah, that's the employment by industry, uh, note, that's the chart you were thinking of.
Yeah, but just realize it's in there if you dig deep enough. I've got a question, how, how do you measure success? You know, I read the comments in the back where people say, don't grow, don't build new neighborhoods. Okay, to them, success is not doing anything, just being a stagnant growth, I guess, and, and in our plan, we're comparing us to Cleveland, Stevenville, and, uh, Weatherford, and, uh, us, and as, and we're growing at 3.2% projected growth rate, and Cleveland is at 3.5, and the others are less than three. So, uh, 158. There it is, one page, 158, employment industry, waste management services, uh, over on the fourth sentence on page 158, on the left column, third paragraph, 12.1%. I mean, we, we contract our solid waste to a company that has an office in Crescent, but that's not where they domicile everything.
I believe that comes from a, a national industry classification, so that also includes professional scientific management and administrative, not simply waste management, so that could include zero waste management employment-
Waste management services, yeah.
But the, the other, it, it includes the others, professional scientific and management and administrative, so I don't think that's, that's saying that you're, you've got a lot of those kinds of jobs necessarily, it's just all within that admittedly very broad category, because it's a, it's a national criteria.
I would like to know where our waste management services administration is going on. I mean, the guy that runs it is in Weatherford. Yeah, I don't get it. Maybe what we do is waste management services is what's doing that, I don't know, as a city. We, we, we pay somebody to collect a lot of trash, haul it away to the landfill. Last, last point in the economic development, I'll, I'll shut up. The median home price in Granbury is more than $249,000. Ava, do you recall what that is? In the last-
268.
268? Well, that's not as bad as I thought it was, I thought it was three-something.
It was, it dropped.
349. Maybe that's for the whole county, though. But, unlike HCAD, they, they send that to us every year, so we'll need to verify that, okay? And, uh, appreciate you getting the population pretty current, it looks about right to me, too. We don't have any antique stores on page 181 on the square. I've been looking for those for 10 years. It was in our last plan, too.
There used to be one.
There used to be several, I'm sure.
Uh, just as I, as a comment on 157, at the bottoms, bottom sentence here, we say the Granbury's median household income level in 2022 was 65015, and then we have our, uh, five-year annual growth on the next page, 158, and it comes in at 63647, less than 2022. I was thinking that our household was closer to 80. Uh, in fact, I think I saw that somewhere here. But it, yeah, Hood's, it's lower than Hood County, and the state's median household of 80. But it should agree either way.
It seems like we can get into our stats in 2022.
Yeah. Yeah.
And I realize this plan started in 2024, so here we are in 2025.
That, that was the most recently available at that time.
Yeah.
We can, we can check to 2023 and, and see how much different it is. I don't think that's going to get us to 80, but it probably went up a little bit.
I think it's in the 60s, I really do. 57, Siri. I was showing the city manager, Brownwood, that, and she was shocked because hers was right there close to ours, she was whining about not having money to do something. I said, well, we've got the same problem you do, you know, so. And the housing and the whole battle of trying to find a place for somebody to afford to live with housing prices at $250 a square foot, you know, it's just hard to find something.
The, uh, so if there's a, a high retired population that can bring that down somewhat, so, I, I grew up in a similar community, I grew up in Kerrville, and there's a, a high number of retired folks in Kerrville, and it's the same thing, the median household income just doesn't jive with the houses that you see and the cars that you see driving around.
I would like to brag about our school system on page 161. They're really working in the CTE program to train, uh, folks to do all kinds of work outside of high school when they graduate, and we probably need to include some of those things here, such as, uh, doing the, the CTE program, builds an airplane every year, teaches the kids to fly it, and then they go out and find jobs in the aviation industry, uh, or they move on to be a pilot, a professional pilot. So, those are some pretty neat things that are pretty creative here, that have happened in the past, and, uh, uh, got a great, you know, robotics program, great, uh, 3D printing program, learn how to run CNC machines, they, they graduate high school, go get a job at a machine shop, just like that, because they know how to run the equipment. And, uh, I think that, I bet Shay shares some of that with you.
And I'll, I'll add to that, that was really the spark behind looking at that entire West 377 corridor as a potential jobs corridor and, and kind of innovation hub, because you're starting with that alignment between GIST and-
And the airport.
And the businesses in the airport around that area.
Yep. And Iron Giant's going to take a lot of those high school kids and put them to work with those skills. We got a lot of these policies in place on the next page. We got limited commercial space on US 377 within the city limits. Uh, it says low-impact manufacturing clusters, there's not a lot of real estate left on 377 that's, you can just jump out and buy it, put in a manufacturing plant. In fact, we, uh, would want that repurposed in some other location, probably, because it doesn't agree with our long-range plan, to go out across some of the car dealerships and put in a manufacturing plant, you know, as you're coming into town.
On East 377?
Yeah.
It-
Yeah.
We, we should probably specify it's, it would be focused on West 377, because that would align more with the rest of the plan.
And I would challenge you to find some raw land on West 377 besides our 30 acres, uh, that, that the city has, in the city limits, anyway. And as we, and our capital improvement plan, uh, if you haven't seen that, we need to get you a copy of that, so you understand, we're planning for growth that direction with the infrastructure that we're planning to put out there, so, um, let, let, Karen, if you could make sure he gets that, that would be helpful, too. It's interesting, your information about the office space and the demand, um, we definitely are working with the hospital and medical profession to increase those spaces here currently, where we've got several projects we're working with to, to do that, and maybe Shay can fill you in on all that. I mean, what you're saying in here is what we're doing, and, uh, you don't have the information of what we, what we've got done and where we're going.
The, uh, you know, the work that, uh, Chris, economic development, the whole staff is doing to bring, uh, the right industries into town, uh, because when I look at this and look at the demographics, you know, if we're going to get, if we're going to continue to grow, we're going to have to have, you know, well, 60% of our people are over 35 at this point in time, with 33% of us over 65. So we need, younger, younger have to have better jobs so that they can afford the home that we have here, so it's, you know, it all comes, it all comes together like that, and with our current demographics, we, I think, are going to have to change those. I think, uh, Lakeview, uh, we start building on that, Lakeview Landing is, that's, I think that's going to change the demographics and even, you know, the, uh, the vibe, if you will, over, over 377, I don't want to change the vibe through the historical district.
Right.
Keep that. And I think you say that right up front.
Yes, that, that is a, an emphasis, you know, throughout multiple chapters of the plan, that there's a, there's going to be new growth, you know, because you're 50% built out, so you have 50% still available, so some proportion of that would need to go towards, I don't want to say entry-level housing, but, you know, housing at certain price points that, that can be purchased by young families and folks in that kind of 20 to 30 age range that, that's a little bit underrepresented, um, in, in the city's demographics. So that's, that's kind of the balancing act, is retaining the, the housing character that, that you have while making it affordable for, uh, for folks who aren't in Granbury yet, but, but that we will need to fill these jobs.
If you jump over to page 185, um, I'm not sure that you were on the rent or occupied housing demand, so we followed the, we tried to follow the 50-unit-per-year model in the 2016 plan that said the demand was for, for, uh, 50 new rental units, apartments every year. We've tried to follow that, but the bottom line is market outpaced us, and they built more than that. And, uh, and in October of 2023, uh, this council approved preliminary plats, uh, that basically build 2,000 living units in Granbury. Now, they're not all built yet, they're not all through the final plat process yet, but they're there, and, and of those, there's about 500 apartment units there, and I just see us growing much faster than this predicted pace in this page here. And then the price points are just off the chart. I was talking to a builder last week, a 1,200-foot home will cost $250 a foot, which is $300,000. And that's a three-bedroom, two-bath home-
Right.
-in today's market in Granbury. Now, I, I asked him why you can build it cheaper in Godly, and it's the price of the land, but, uh, you can't build it any cheaper in Fort Worth. I think $250 a foot's probably close to the rate, but even the houses are selling for that price, uh, 225 to 250. So as we go through this number and, and build our future, we need to, to keep that in mind, too, as we look at this page. But I'd like for you to just know that Lake Villa's apartment was built, um, within the last five years, 275 units, Brazos Crossing, 135 units, and Dos Abita, 144. And, and I've got three apartment complexes that are talking to us, waiting for the moratorium to be over, and it's, it's going to be a, a 250 unit, a 275 unit, and there was another one, where was it? There's another 200-plus unit somewhere, I can't picture it in my mind right now, but it's there. And so, uh, oh, it's 275 unit with Lakeview Landing. And so all that'll be happening in the next five years. And my question is, is are we overbuilding based on the study? And what do we do? It's free enterprise, they own the land, they want to build, and it's, it's in the comp plan for that. How do we curb that? We can't. But, uh, our infrastructure, all the roads score F, adequately provide that, I think, in here, but, uh, all the highways, texted highways scored F everywhere in our town. F. They, not a D, not a C, but an F. And density's not helping that. And so we're, I'm wanting to run from density, I'm wanting large lot development, ranch-style homes everywhere for $100,000, but that's not, not reality, so. And, and with that mindset, what does the council want? And that is just throwing in here that this is what we're going to do, and, uh, what, what, what you say we need, we, we've got to do, and so we need to, we need to fine-tune the wording on all of that. The, the draft for page 198, uh, we have a policy, it's telling us how to create an economic development corporation. We, this is copy and paste from the last plan.
Which page did you say that?
188, 189. And another thing that I see as a recurring theme through here, throughout the whole document, is we need a, we need another plan. We need a plan for sidewalks, we need a plan for pedestrian, whatever, we need a plan for downtown, we need a plan for, we need a plan for, listen, we've got all these plans. We've got a master park plan, we've got a trails and sidewalk program, plan, uh, we need a plan for broadband, now, we got Starlink, people just pay the fee, so. I, I have no mercy for somebody that doesn't have internet, if they want it, they can get it through their cellphone, or they can get it, they don't have to have a cable running through their house connected to the world wide web when they can access it wirelessly, and save billions of dollars. Okay. I'm going to shut up.
I'm going to shut up. Okay. Like I said, it's a working plan.
I feel for you, brother.
And it will be.
I just wanted to clarify on page 188, is that where we recommend a EDC?
We're doing all that.
Yeah, on 188, the top right, you say Granbury must develop an industrial recruitment strategy. We, we have a whole department that we just established two, just last year for that.
Two and a half, two and a half years ago. Yeah, we've.
And we're, we're doing what it says in here we need to do. And again, when I read that paragraph the first time, I thought, okay, we kind of have that. I mean, we're not, we kind of, we have that department. But I didn't care that the paragraph's in here until, like I said earlier tonight, talking to Chris, he says, this is my marching orders and that implies we need to do something else that we haven't done. And we, it's done.
I believe that was one of Shay's comments, and, and this was written before Shay came on board. So I believe that was one of her comments to update that, that particular paragraph, since that, that has been done, so we'll reword that to reflect.
But prior to Shay, Lance was here for the last two years.
Right.
In, in, in that capacity. We established that when the EDC program we had with the county didn't work.
Yep. So anyway, we're doing all that stuff. And we need to rely on and work with Granbury. We bought the Granbury Historic Square as well. We're talking about more businesses on the square and we're maintaining our historic look and all that. We, we just bought a 28,000-square-foot building to protect it, to make sure it stays a historic part of our downtown and also provides office space that's needed and parking space that's needed. And maintain our historic front, front door, so to speak.
And it cash flows.
Yeah, it cash flows, pays for itself. And you didn't know that. Somebody should have told you. You know, somebody should have sat down and said, this is what we're doing. I'm not blaming you, I'm blaming us. And we are sticking to the master trail plan. Says promote mixed and walkable communities. We're sticking to that plan. Built a new emergency room on the, on the west, east side of town. And that attracts medical offices, professionals. All this is in our strategic plan that we've been working. Diversify housing stock, we're doing that. Encourage small and office co-working spaces, we're doing that.
You got to read your comments quickly.
I'll let y'all do it. Go Parks and Recreation or something. I don't have but a couple of comments there, I bet. No, getting back to the implementation, I've got lots of comments, but I'm not going to offer them tonight. No, we need to plow through this so he can go redo this plan and bring it back to us in another way, and then we can review it again. We do not have a master stormwater plan. We were hired an engineering firm to do that, and they came back and said, we really don't want to do that yet. So where you talk about that in here for a lot of, a lot of details on page 211, I just want to mention, we don't have a master stormwater plan. Yeah, we're going to have to get one. And I actually signed the purchase order for it. It's just, they said, no, you don't want that right now. There's some kind of a regulation barrier there that we don't want to get involved with.
Okay.
Well, I think you, Chris, are certainly on the same page. When you get on page 214, it talks about medium-density housing, including small lot detached housing, may be appropriate in some cases as identified by the future land use map and land use dashboards, but should not become the predominant form of housing in Granbury. And I think.
We agree with that.
Yeah. And you talk about sewer, the, you know, what, you know, the water, the things that are getting driven by that. So parks, page one on parks.
Oh, whatever you want to be on. I didn't have a lot of comments there.
Yeah, growth management. Those are the goals, demographics, oh, here we go. Tenure accomplishments. No updates to the goals and objective standards, maps or recommendations. And I think we probably received a grant since this was written.
Yeah.
Yeah, to extend a trail and do some other things at the parks. So there's some more plans there.
Was that on the Parks chapter?
What page is that on there?
That was page 196. Bottom line.
Yeah, Lambert, Lambert Branch Park received a grant. Parks Wildlife Grant, $150,000. Match with 150 from the city. This will help create some walking trail amenities. That's the problem, every time you get a grant, you got to match it. Where do you get it if you don't have it? So. We figure out how to find it.
I'd have to go pull it up. The school just completed a demographic study. And I know Tech Dot has one. North Texas Council of Government has one, and I think they're all pretty close. But our growth rate that we are looking at on page 197 is 3.18%. And I have to go back to the school, it's not quite that, but I think that may be school age population as well. Because it's one, one and a half to two, which would be different growth, just a different growth rate.
Was that just specifically school age?
It could be, I'd have to go back and look at that. I, I don't recall Tech Dot or North Central Council as being at 3.18 either. In the out-years, this one is 3.8 across.
Well, you got to keep in mind, this report doesn't show any of the building permits for new houses that were issued in 2022 because of the computer outage. And we've provided that data to them, so it'll be in the new book.
Yes.
And what I've just talked about provides, is county-wide and school district-wide. So it's, it's a large, it's a, it's a broader. That doesn't make me feel better.
It's growing.
More people.
3%. Back on page one, or 225, I'll get over to implementation. On, on the following charts, it references CMO as responsible entity. And I don't see that in the legend on 225. So who would the CMO be, or what would that be?
That would be the city manager.
Oh, thank you.
City manager's office, yeah.
Thank you.
Checking.
I need more help.
Yeah, I assume that was city manager, but it didn't, it's not in the legend, so I agreed with that.
Was to just give Tammy another job.
Yeah, give it to Tammy.
Oh, she was listening.
You know, probably my favorite part on this was this implementation action plan. Because it, when you break into short, medium, and long-term, you know, it, it would be, it'll be real simple for us twice a year, once a quarter or whatever, to go over the short-term ones and, and know where we're at. And, and again, if this is marching orders for the city manager to, you know, what we want to accomplish it, it, it is a, I like the format. It's, it's going to be, I don't say, the job's not easy, but following what we're doing is easy. It just makes it, it's a simple process, I like that. So thank you for that.
And we, we recommend too, you know, utilizing your, your planning and zoning commission to help with that effort as well, to, you know, work with staff to kind of report on, on some of those things and, and track the progress that's being made in that. So that it's, it's got that kind of additional line of oversight over the, the plan implementation.
But this is where it's not just a plan that ends up on a shelf.
Right.
It's something that we can actually use and refer to. And, and like I said, I'd like to see us take out all of the short-term and make that just a single list with it, and take all the other stuff out of it, where it's something that we can look at on a real, on a very regular basis. The long-term and even midterm goals, you know, that might be once a year. The long-term might be once every year or two that you'd.
Right.
Actually want to, want to talk about those items. But the short-term is something that we'll look at often.
Someone mentioned the CIP, yeah, those typically become your CIP items, you know, that you're looking at every five years or so.
Page 231, HN.19. Maintain community character and balance of housing types by continuing to emphasize low-density housing character without increasing the percentage of housing that is high-density or large buildings. So that conflicts with other places in the document. That's what I wrote. And then there are some areas here where you're talking about incentivizing above it on HN.14, HN.15, HN.16. It's not the policy of the council to incentivize. First off, we don't have a pot of money to incentivize for infill or redevelopment within the city limits. And use, I mean, yeah, they benefit from having the infrastructure near them, we're at the location. But we can't, we can't, I don't know how you incentivize something without incentivize money. If you've got a tax increment district, we've got one of those, but you can't do the whole city that way.
We could focus on it for more of a regulatory.
Philosophically, this council has told me they don't want to incentivize houses. We want to incentivize business that create jobs, that create paychecks. And that's what we do.
It, it doesn't necessarily have to mean financial incentives. It can mean regulatory incentives as well, like expedited permitting or.
Well, we, we do expedite permitting on everything, so, yeah, I got you. Support nonprofit developers to provide more opportunities for homeownership and workforce housing. So we don't have any of those knocking on our door, don't know where to find them. Habitat Humanities got a neighborhood out in the county that they develop. Doesn't have anything to do with us, so it's way beyond our limits. Anyway, keep that in mind as you're reviewing it. This incentivizing word means money to us, two-dollar signs, that's what it says. And philosophically, we might incentivize a, a development that's outside the city limits that wants to be a, a citizen of the city. We might incentivize that in some way, if it meets our criteria. We don't want tiny homes incentivized and on our tax roll. I mean, if somebody wants to build tiny homes, we shouldn't be the one funding it for everybody. The taxpayers are very conservative here and don't want us giving away, or overtaxing them so we can give it to somebody else. I think that's a philosophical mindset. And, and we're all about finding grants to help people, you know, the, the folks are applying for TDHCA grants right now, tax-free credit housing, and we encourage that. They'll, they'll award one project in the entire 16-county area, and we've received two of those in the last five, six years. So we felt like we've done pretty successful there. And I didn't mention those apartment complexes to you earlier. But those are for, you know, low income. One of them was strictly for seniors, 55-plus community. The other one was for any, any, it's family workforce housing. So we, we do want to, under, under this ED, we want to recognize that we do have adopted a 4,000-plus-acre TERS since, since we did the other plan. And so we're working with that for economic development and, and incentivizing through that.
Ed as well.
Yeah. ED 15, on page 235. Basically, everything on page 235, we're doing, we're current with you there. So those are, those are easy to, to say, we've done that, mark that off the list.
Okay.
But that really doesn't help us with moving forward in an advanced way. But again, developing a plan is a recurring statement throughout this entire document. And it depends on where you're at in the document. On page 236, I wrote current, everything there. And 237, we're current, doing all that, except for GM 10. Reduce parking requirements outside downtown to allow market-driven parking that will provide opportunities for value-generating uses of property. So we did work with the, the transit system and helped them with a, by cleaning up some, some of the yard. We did some forced labor with them, and then they, they got a grant from the state and built a huge parking lot. It's kind of a rideshare thing. And we partnered with them during these busy events. People can park there and ride a shuttle to the square. And not, not a lot of people participate in that, they don't like that metro feel because they want to park and walk to where they're going. But we do provide that in remote parking lots throughout the city. And we worked on that. And so I'd say everything that you got here under this GM, we have, we're pretty much current on all that. And in the ED 6 through 18, yeah, ED 5, ED 4, all that without an economic corporation. All right, I'm shutting up. Appendix or y'alls?
Any comments on the appendix?
Nope.
About, what, 180, 200 responses in the appendix, I think. I looked at it, and 45% were over 65, 40% are over 65. And we have a lot of comments that says, don't do anything, stop, stop doing this, yeah. And I want to comment too, that we talk about the quarterly plan. There is a, there is the, the five-year plan, there is a three-year plan, there is this year's plan, and we do get a quarterly update on that plan each and every quarter. Chris and staff provide that. And then a monthly on the financials. So, you know, this, this is taking us out further, looking at, you know, where are we going out further so that we can start building back this way? It will be used, thank you, Chris. Anybody else?
We will keep working at it.
We do appreciate your time. Thanks. All right. Ready to go to 7.2. Consider authorizing the city manager to execute a facilities improvement agreement, which would be FIA 25-01, binding between City of Granbury and Grace Classical Christian Academy, Inc. That's the owner and developer. And this will be for the infrastructure of Grace Classical Edition Lot 1, Block 1. The property is located at 2401 Andrews. Mr. Coffin?
Thank you, I'll turn it over to our Director of Community Development, Carol Wowie, to handle this.
Thank you. I think we have a slide that shows the location of the site. Thank you, Carla.
Uh-oh, here we go again.
So this site is located on the north side of Loop 567, to the east of Lipan Highway. It's a large area that had been, I believe, a turf field. They're taking half of that to construct a, a private school. And it has been plotted out, the FIA would provide for improvements to include water, drainage, and street improvements. And the FIA is required to come before council to authorize city manager action. If you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I'll add to this that they've submitted a, a plan to move their streetlights closer to the highway intersection of their, their private road that goes in there. And also, we are working with Public Works and our engineer with EHT to figure out how to get sewer service to this location. They do want sewer service, and we're talking about, the ordinance requires them to tie into it within 500 feet. And so we're looking at. And so we're looking at ways to get it within 500 feet for them to be able to tie into it and access. And Mr. Collins, could you come fix these monitors again, please? This is crazy. Thank you. Any questions, we can try to answer them?
Counsel? No questions. I'll then ask to have a motion to authorize city manager to execute a facilities improvement agreement, FIA 25-01, by and between the City of Granbury and Grace Classical Christian Academy, Inc.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Who made that, Mr. Rodriguez or Mr.?
I did.
Mr. Rodriguez, and seconded by, let's see, Mr. Oberdear?
Oberdear.
Oberdear. We got you totally confused, Carla?
Okay.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. I hear no nays, that will pass 6-0. Okay? Number 7.3 is consider approving an engineering service agreement amendment between Cobb, Finley, and Associates, Inc. and the City of Granbury, Texas for on-call city engineering services, and consider adopting ordinance number 25-10, amending the operating budget for the general fund for the fiscal year 2024, 2025. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. I'll turn it over to Kara again.
Okay, thank you. This is stated as a financial consideration. We have a contract in place that needs to be amended. The contract was adopted in fiscal year 2425 budget for $75,000 for a consultant to complete civil engineering reviews, among other engineering types of reviews. This would allow the increase of the original agreement by 138,000, from which 100,000 is anticipated to be reimbursed by developers, while 38,000 would be used for city-related projects. That's the summary of the proposal.
I might just add that historically, when we contracted out the planning review services in the past, we always needed to come back and reassess it as we get into the year. As you know, we've transitioned into that completely now, from trying to do some of it in-house and some of it out of house. And so this is a, the first attempt to get us where we can move forward to take care of business for the rest of the year. Hopefully, it's the only one we'll need to do. And again, it is a pass-through, for the most part, of engineering costs. We charge the developers a fee to do their plan reviews. Basically, what we pay the engineers, what they reimburse us for.
Okay. Discussion? Anyone been there? Do I have a motion to approve an engineering service agreement amendment between Cobb, Finley, and Associates, Inc. and the City of Granbury, Texas for an on-call city engineering service, and consider adopting ordinance number 25-10 for, or amending the operating budget for the general fund for fiscal year 2024, 2025?
So moved.
Mr. Wiley makes a motion?
Second.
Mr. Alum seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. I hear no nays, that will pass 6-0. We'll move to 7.4. We are considering appointing members to the Building Standards, Plumbing Adjustments, and Appeals Board to fill vacancies. You handling this, Mr. Kaufman, or is counsel handling this?
I can, I can talk.
Okay.
I'll be happy to share with you. So we have a committee that needs volunteers, and we have a, a need for this committee to meet. They haven't met since 2014, and it's Building Standards, Plumbing Adjustment, and Appeals Board. And we need some more volunteers too. And I don't have the list in front of me right now, but basically, we need an electrician, we need a plumber, and an insurance professional to step up and volunteer to be on this board as well. But if we can make this appointment, the senior agenda tonight of Tony Callaway, the applicant, we can move forward and have a meeting. If all of them can show up, we'll have a quorum there. We also have Fire Marshal Kevin Jones that's required by the ordinance to be on this committee. We need to appoint him as well.
Okay, so we would be appointing Mr. Callaway, Tony Callaway, and Kevin, or Mr. Jones would be?
The Fire Marshal.
The Fire Marshal? And he's?
Mr. Callaway is an architect, so he would fill one of the building positions, building official.
And Mr. Jones would be, we assign him or?
Yeah, appoint him for as long as his tenure is here. As long as he continues to work here, we need to appoint him. There's no term limit on him. That position has to be on this board.
Okay.
Regardless, if he retires, we'll have to have someone else become the Fire Marshal.
Okay. And no one else has signed up at this point?
Right. So we're, we're really leaning on you as elected officials to help us find people to serve in those three capacities, plumbing, electrical, and insurance.
And they do not have to live in the city?
They do not have to be a resident of the city.
Mayor?
Mr. Rodriguez?
I make the motion that we appoint Tony Callaway as the building industry position to fulfill an unexpired term ending in January 2026. In addition, appoint the current city's Fire Marshal, Kevin Jones, to this board.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Corgan seconds that. We would be appointing both Mr. Callaway, Mr. Tony Callaway, to the building industry position, which expires January 26th, and Mr. Kevin Jones, who is the, we are appointing from the city as the Fire Marshal, who's, you know, designated for this board. So for those two, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That passes 6-0. Okay. Okay, that takes care of. The deliberation agenda will now move to citizen comments on matters not on the agenda. I do have people that have signed up. I don't recognize the names, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna go through the rules very quickly since we haven't had people speak, may or may not have spoken here. One person at the mic, you could, you recognized, the presiding officer will recognize you. You're allowed, I'm allowed to, you could speak to me, not, you know, calling out names to the individual counsel, address their comments to the presiding officer, and you may file copies of your remarks. And I saw that Ms. Walker does have a couple of copies of things that you have brought that she will provide to us. So I'm gonna call Ms. Cheryl Shadden, and if you would come and just make sure you turn that mic on. The red light will come on. Now it's who you are and where you live.
Hello, I'm Cheryl Shadden.
We use that so we can get back to you.
I'm Cheryl Shadden, I live here in Hood County. I came to talk to you today. I want to let everybody know, we are protecting Hood County. What does this mean? This means Hood County has set a precedent. We've set a historical precedent, and we've set a legal precedent. What am I talking about? February 13th, Granbury residents convinced the Texas Coalition or the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality to proceed with their challenge to the air permit for proposed Wolf Hollow III, a methane-burning power plant, marking the first time a Texas Energy Fund project will face a contested hearing. What does a contested hearing mean? It means that this will sit in front of an administrative law judge because Hood County and Somerville County have raised enough concern about air pollution from a fourth gas power plant in this county, and concerns for health impact, livestock impact, property value impact. We've raised enough of a concern that this is going to a contested hearing. What does this mean for all of us? It means we need help. We're not done standing up. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to thank you personally. You were there when we had our public hearing in September. We really appreciate you speaking up for the county. This is an important matter. Do we want to be the celebration capital of Texas, or do we want to be the air pollution capital of Texas? Here's some of the air pollutants. Carbon monoxide, nitrogen oxides, particulate matter, hazardous air pollution, organic compounds, sulfur dioxide, sulfur hexafluoride, sulfuric acid mist. The proposed plant will also emit greenhouse gases. Do we want another gas power plant in Hood County? The southern end of this Hood County is getting to be a waste dump. We need to stand up and say, no, you can do something about this. Are they going to have the most current technology stopping this? No, they're not. Are they gonna scrub any of these air pollutants coming off of this? No, they are not, because it's considered a peaker plant. Now, is that set in this contract? No, it's not. It's not going to be a peaker plant. They can do whatever they want. So if we want the most current technology, scrub these air contaminants. Don't pollute Hood County. Don't pollute this lake anymore. Don't pollute my home, your home, or this tourist attraction. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Now, Ms. Karen Pearson? Your name and where you live, please.
Yes, sir. I just turned off.
There you go.
I've never done this before. Hi, good evening. My name is Karen Pearson, and I live also in Hood County. Actually, myself and my 82-year-old parents live across from Wolf Hollow and also the Marathon Bitcoin Mine. We're about 800 to 1,000 feet as the crow flies. And I just want to share a little bit of the experiences that we have out there firsthand that happened in, to us. Some of the health issues include hearing loss, hypertension, vertigo, hair loss, and unexplained brain mass that we're still exploring. These health issues, they are also similar to others in the community. We also experience valves blowing that shake the windows and the dishes in our home, and the decreased property value. To fight a third Wolf Hollow plant, some of us spoke at the TCEQ public hearing back in September. Thank you, Mayor, for also participating in that. And after a lot of hard work, meeting deadlines, jumping through a lot of hoops, we finally had a victory, or we have a victory now. Five people were awarded a contested hearing due to being deemed that we are affected people that live near Wolf Hollow. So what this means, as what Cheryl was saying, five of us are in a battle for Hood County, and we're also battling for the City of Granbury. It's not just about us out there, it's about all of us in the city and in the county. But, you know, we can't fight this alone, so we do need help. I'm gonna be pretty bold here in a few moments, but some of the things that are gonna be important that we need help to do is safeguard. We need scrubbers on those stacks to filter out the toxins. We need higher stacks so that the pollutants aren't just falling back down on the area, on the land, on the water, the people, the livestock. We need more stringent specifications on the hazardous toxins. We need to put up the SPOD sensors that are made by Senset. They're very expensive, but they're very good. But, you know, we won't get any of this done, and we won't make any headway whatsoever without an attorney. We can't do this alone. Boldly, I'm gonna ask and say that we need to start raising some funds. We need to start with 50,000 at least. We need a good environmental attorney that will help us on this and will speak out for us. And this is gonna easily go into 250,000. The five of us that have been awarded this, we don't have this kind of money. But again, we're not fighting this alone. We're fighting this for the whole county and all of the city to speak out and to help. As Cheryl was saying, this is not gonna be known as the best tourist area. It's gonna be known as the best toxic area. So I am just asking you guys, we're not going away, and we're not gonna stop this fight, but we need help, and we just want to know where do you stand and how will you help us? Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time. Okay. Ms. Shannon Wolf?
Hi, I'm Shannon Wolf, and I also live in Hood County, Precinct 2. And I know that you guys are very much aware of what's going on in Precinct 2, and I am the precinct chair of that area. So not only are we looking at more power plants, we already have three. I don't know if you know that, but inside Precinct 211, three power plants. We're right on the lake. There is a solar farm that's wanting 600 acres. That solar farm, those people are from Japan. They're wanting to sell the, the energy that they collect, not to us. They're wanting to ship it off. That's what they've been doing to the gas and oil that they've been buying. Not only that, we have the largest battery storage facility inside 211. So we've got Bitcoin, we've got the expansion of, of these, these power plants. And folks, they're not, they're not focused on helping us in Hood County. We are supposed to be supplying to the metroplex. And I'm thinking, we'll put the power plant in the metroplex and leave, leave my precinct alone. I also understand that there is a, a clear jurisdiction distinction between county and city. And you're probably wondering, why on earth are we talking to you here? Well, the, the answer is that I'm hoping that there are some things that you are willing to discuss that you could do in the city that will make it easier on us just a few miles down the road. One of those, I was really happy to hear some of the things y'all were talking about, some recommended strategies on environmental resources. And they talked about trees, they talked about water. They, you guys talked about a scenic city gold-level certification. Wow, that's really something. Would you consider having more stringent ordinances that would protect your water, the lake? Would you pursue a distinction on having a wonderful, healthy, clean lake? Would you consider ordinances on clean air in the city? Because we're just outside the city, and it's going to give us something to fight these people with when pollution comes into, into this area. And so I'm asking you, please consider doing some things in this city that would help the city, and it also would be highly compatible with some of the things that, that you were talking about just, just a few moments ago. So I'm just asking, would you please help us by doing some things in the city that we could maybe use as, as some ammunition to push back against these people that are not Texans? None of them are Texans. Some of them aren't even Americans coming into our area. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Paige Kundoff?
Hi, I'm Paige Kundoff, and I live in the city on Penrod Street. And we just wanted to bring to your attention our water on our street. Got a couple rows there of neighbors that were all having trouble with discolored water. I have sent multiple emails to you guys, so I know you are aware. I know you have certain things in the city that you are working with on other ideas, but please put this into consideration. I do have samples of some stuff that the water is staining when we wash it. And I have samples of the water where you can see it has settled, and there's iron or rust in it. We are flushing our pipes. You guys are flushing the water hydrant on our street as well. But you can see that on the roads of Cherry and Elizabeth, they are stained well with rust. So just my consideration to please put this as a priority and help the other citizens that are on my street as well. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Ms. Kundoff? Dylan Taylor?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Dylan Taylor, I'm resident of Hood County. I've been in Hood County since 2016. I'm currently residing on Penrod Street. I'm gonna echo one of my neighbor's concerns. The topic of water's been mentioned several times tonight, including the recognition of Granbury's water being ranked among the top five best-tasting water. However, in our neighborhood, we have been experiencing less than tasteful water since May of 2023 is when I first discovered the issue firsthand. Despite many efforts of myself to install filters to mitigate the issue, the issue has worsened over the past 15 months, causing damages to appliances, faucets, fixtures, and frequent replacements of filters is not a viable long-term solution. and frequent replacements of filters is not a viable long-term solution, as an underlying cause seems to be degrading the water lines. On September 19th of 2024, survey crews were present in my block, and when I approached them to discuss what they were doing, they stated they were surveying the neighborhood water lines for replacement. I would like to know what specific actions the city is taking or has planned to address deteriorating water infrastructure that is negatively impacting our neighborhood. Access to clean and safe water should be a fundamental, fundamental expectation for all residents, and the ongoing issues we are facing should not be ongoing concern of this magnitude. I appreciate your time in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I notice on Ms. Kundoff and Ms. Shadden, we do not have a phone number. We don't ask for that for personal, you know, just to, to be personal. If there is some action that can be taken, that come, some conversation that can be held, then we would reach out and contact you. If you would like to put those phone numbers on before you go, Ms. Walker will be happy to take those for you. And we appreciate your time. Thank you for coming. Thank you for speaking up. So that's all of the citizen comments that we have for tonight that have signed up. So we will now be going into executive session. I now declare that the Granbury City Council is convened in an open session, that all members are present. The city council will go into closed session pursuant to provisions of Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the following sections: 551071, consultation with attorney pending or contemplated litigation; 551072, deliberation regarding real property; 551086, certain public power utilities competitive matters; and 551087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. We are now in executive session. I now declare that the Granbury City Council reconvenes in an open session. There was no action taken in closed session. All council members are present. Anybody have any action?
Mr. Mayor.
Ah, Mr. Wiley.
I would like to make a motion to authorize the city manager to enter into power contracts as approved by Granbury Legal Counsel and Consultants, and upon submission and determination of best and final pricing.
Motion's been made. Motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion passes 6-0. Is there other business? No one has other business? I now declare the meeting is closed. Thank you, gentlemen.